All right.
Good evening, and welcome to this, the April 10th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos.
Present.
Councilmember Branning.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kik.
Here.
Mayor Marchand.
Here. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We just came out of a closed session. I'd asked the city attorney if there was any reportable action taken.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. Yes, I have two items to report. With our closed session items, the first item being the business license tax item, which is 1.1. I'd like to report that the city council has authorized the city manager to execute two separate settlement agreements in substantially the same form as agreements presented to the city council on closed session with the city attorney's approval as to form. One of those with the Lawrence-Livermore National Security LLC as the manager and operator of the Lawrence-Livermore National Laboratory under contract with the U.S. Department of Energy National Nuclear Security Administration, and the other with the National Technology and Engineering Solutions of Sandia LLC, doing business at Sandia National Laboratories under contract with the U.S. Department of Energy National Nuclear Security Administration. In addition, the city council's authorization is to cover and extend to the signing and execution of all documents necessary to resolve the business license tax matters with these parties. And upon signing, the settlement agreements will be available for inspection by the public, but the tax payment and other privileged tax information will be redacted. That concludes my report on that first item, but I have another report on the second closed session item we had. That item was with regard to the national prescription opioid litigation. And with that, I will report the following. The city council has authorized the city manager to sign up for, register, and execute settlement agreements with the city attorney's approval as to form with the following parties in the national opioid litigation: Allergan, CVS, Teva, Walgreens, and Walmart. The authority extends to and includes the execution of all documents and agreements necessary to participate in those settlements. The city council further authorized and instructed the city manager to make the election whether or not to receive the settlement funds or to allow them to flow to the county after considering the cost to receive, administer, and expend those funds locally for opioid remediation. Upon signing by all parties, the settlement agreements will be available for inspection by the public upon request. Lastly, the council directed staff to prepare a confirming resolution for adoption by the city council at a future meeting. And that concludes my report, Alex. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, moving on to the proclamations and presentations. Fun stuff. This is the Little League World Series is coming back. And this is always a great event here in Livermore. So with that, we have Kathleen Minser and Bill Abumrod here. And we're going to do a draw, as I understand. So I'd ask the council members to join me as we participate in the bracket draw here. Mr. Abumrod.
So mark your calendars. We'll start on July 30th and go through August 6. And with the championship game being on August 6th, so for us, we always have to do an official draw as to who's going to be playing those first games. So we thought we'd let you guys do the draw for us tonight. So game one is always starts off the tournament with an international game at 9:00 a.m. There you go. Now you guys are official. All right, so who's the first team out? Just go ahead and read the region.
Southeast.
Southeast, that's a U.S. team, so.
All right, number two.
Mexico.
Oh, okay.
All right, team number three.
Latin America.
Latin America. And team number four.
57. Division 57.
All right, that's our local team. West and the West, West. We've got 12 to do. No, I'm trying to count that. Asia Pacific. Asia Pacific, all right.
Southwest.
Southwest. East. East, right, those from the east.
Central.
Central, okay, thank you. Europe and Africa, Europe, Africa, right, thank you.
Can you say else out or from Canada?
Canada. And our last one, Australia, Australia, that's awesome, thank you so much.
So what that gives us then on day one at 9:00 a.m., Mexico will play Latin America. That should be a very good game. The Southeast will play the local team at noon. Asia Pacific will play Europe, Africa at 3:00 p.m. The West will play the Southwest at 6:00 p.m. on day one. Canada will play Australia at 9:00 a.m. on day two, and the East will play the Central at noon on day two. So that's the start of our tournament. We thank you guys. We're also planning on doing the downtown parade this year to kick off the festivities on Saturday, July 29th. Want to have all you guys out there to attend. It'll be over at Stockman's Park. Should be a very, very fun week. Last year, we exceeded over 50,000 people in attendance for the week with the championship game that night when Danville played South Korea, and Danville won the whole thing. We had over 5,000 fans in the stands that night. So we're looking for a really exciting event where we've partnered up with some other companies now, and Livermore Cobalt is going to be doing a lot of our work out there, and they're a local company here. And I'm really happy to say that this year, we have actually the umpires staying in a hotel in Livermore. So our goal next year is to bring the players back to Livermore. So, but that's where it's going to be this year. And we thank you guys so much for all your help. Every year, you guys are a big, big supporter of the event. We just get the mayor out to throw out a first pitch for us, but any council members are always welcome to come out and throw out a first pitch if you'd like, so. So.
Yeah, can we just.
Schedule?
Okay, we'll schedule right into the mics.
Okay, I will do that. So game one at 9:00 a.m. on Sunday, July 30th will be Mexico versus Latin America. Game two, 12:00 p.m. will be the Southeast versus District 57. Game three will be Asia Pacific versus Europe, Africa. Game four will be the West versus the Southwest at 6:00 p.m. And then on 9:00 a.m. Monday morning will be Canada versus Australia, and 12:00 p.m. will be the East versus the Central. So that's our schedule to start, and after that, you're in winners and losers brackets, and we'll see where it goes from there. But thank you guys all for your support.
Great. Bill, Kathleen, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you out there in July. Okay, it's great. Thank you. So with that, item 3.2 is a proclamation declaring April 2023 as Fair Housing Month. And I'm going to be presenting this to Steve Maderas, who's the president of the Board of Directors of the Bay East Association of Realtors, and Kevin McCallum, the vice chair of the Local Government Relations Committee, and Mary Ann Rocha, who is a member of the Local Government Relations Committee.
We have a bunch of people.
Oh.
Are you going to come down and take?
Morning up there as well, and we've got Mike. Yeah, we got everybody. Okay. Proclamation of the City of Livermore proclaiming Fair Housing Month, April 2023. Whereas the passage of the Fair Housing Act in 1968 enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, and national origin. And whereas fair housing is a positive community good, benefiting the environment and our social fabric, economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity and integration. And whereas fair housing is integral to the ethical commitment of members of the National Association of Realtors and the Bay East Association of Realtors, and is critical to the ability of all real estate professionals to serve their clients, customers, and communities. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. And whereas the city of Livermore is an inclusive community committed to fair housing, promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities intended to provide or advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of the state of California. Now therefore, the city council, the city of Livermore, proclaims the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month. I present this to you all.
While you're walking down here, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As president of Bay East, I'd like to humbly accept this proclamation. Like to also thank the city of Livermore, who has always been an equal partner with us in all fair housing, and we've had a long and storied history with the city of Livermore, and we can expect it to continue long into the future. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Someone bring that.
Camera.
Fair housing.
All right, thank you. Okay, now moving on to item 4.0. This is the citizens forum. Would you please ask, I'm going to ask the city clerk to explain how someone can participate in the open forum tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it's relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate in person or remotely as noticed on the agenda. To provide comment in person, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the city council chambers. Speakers will be announced in the order received. We will hear from members of the public who are in person first, followed by those wishing to speak on Zoom. To provide comment by Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or star nine of calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand at the beginning of each item. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern or upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have anyone who should speak to us tonight at the citizens forum?
Yes, we do. The first speaker is going to be David McWinn, McWiggen, excuse me, followed by Maureen Hamm, followed by John George.
You're right, Johnny. This has been going on too long. I'll admit, I was naive and thought that you would deal with my complaint legally. That's not a mistake I'm going to make again. I'm becoming back to Officer Black, but tonight, I'm going to focus on Johnny's deliberate violation of the Penal Code sections covering the handling of public complaints. To remind you of the timeline, I filed my complaint in January 2019. It was investigated and a report was written in May 2019. The report was reviewed in June and July of 2019. Now, California Penal Code Section 832.7 F1, covering civil complaints, states, "The department or agency shall provide written notification to the complaining party of the disposition of the complaint within 30 days of the disposition." Livermore was required to provide a response by August 2019. I'm sure Mr. Cala told you this, but you chose to deliberately withhold the response in direct violation of Penal Code Section 832.7 F1. How do we know it was deliberate? Because in November 2020, I wrote then newly appointed Chief Young this letter. This letter in part states, "I was contacted by the investigator in May 2019. During our discussion, he told me he had approximately one week of work to complete. I can appreciate the COVID-19 pandemic caused strain on resources. Also, the retirement of Chief Harris has to have had its impact. But given it's been over 21 months since I filed my complaint, I would like to think any final determination is forthcoming." So in November 2020, after Livermore had been in violation for over a year, you got together with Chief Young and Mr. Cala and decided to continually willfully violating Penal Code Section 832.7 F1. Now, it could be you were never informed of Mr. Cala's deliberate withholding of the response in July 2019. It's possible you were never told about Mr. Cala and Chief Young conspiring to continually willfully violating the Penal Code Section 832.7 F1. It could be you're just a useful fool who's completely clueless to his staff willfully violating the law behind your back. It could be you're just a fool, but I think it's much more likely, Johnny. You're just a lying, corrupt criminal, and you will be found out.
I think it's important to recognize that impaired drivers like David McWiggen put our entire community at risk. The DA saw fit to bring charges against Mr. McWiggen, and when he had his day in court, he did not contest the charges that were brought against him. So impaired drivers like him put our community at risk, and I support the police officers to take impaired drivers like Dave McWiggen off the roads. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sir.
So certainly, so this was a matter, and the ball's dropped by my office and by me. So I will readily admit that, and I have consistently throughout this situation. We should have sent out, as Mr. McWiggen said, we should have provided him notice within 30 days of the conclusion. That was in the late summer of 2019. At that time, we thought we had issued that notice, and then we were struck by the cyber attack. We thought we had it in our files. When it came to our attention, Mr. McWiggen followed up. We started piecing our files back together to see whether we could locate that particular document. Being unable to do that, he followed up again in 2022, at which time I took it upon myself to issue him a new closing letter. I couldn't find the original one that we thought we sent out, so I didn't give him the closing letter in 2022. Were we late? Yes, we were. But he was provided with the information that is required by law, and if the charges in his complaint were determined to be unfounded. And that concludes my report.
Okay, so they were unfounded after the investigation. Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Maureen Hamm, followed by John George, followed by Trish Monroe.
Good evening. I'm Maureen Hamm, a longtime Livermore resident and affordable housing advocate. I have worked with homeless clients for the last 12 years. I praise Asbury United Methodist Church with their track record of caring for our homeless neighbors. For many years, they have ministered to them, providing showers and laundry services and space for nonprofits to help the homeless folks. Asbury knows how to do this well and professionally. I support their plan to build a tiny home village on their property. They intend to partner with nonprofits to provide services so that these future residents will have a home. Asbury has much experience in working with nonprofits to extend the ripple effects of love to our brothers and sisters. If you drive into Asbury's parking lot, you will see signs that say, "Be kind." I urge you to be kind and support this project. Thank you.
The next speaker is John George, followed by Trish Monroe, followed by Mary Perner.
Mayor and council members, my name is John, and I'm the owner of a small business called Smash My Trash. We offer mobile compaction service to businesses that utilize open-top dumpsters. Our unique service helps businesses save money by smashing their dumpsters, reducing the number of hauls, and thus reducing greenhouse gas emissions caused by hauling trucks. Livermore Climate Action Plan states that cars, trucks, and other vehicles represent the largest source of emissions in Livermore. Our smashes help reduce the number of trucks on the road. In fact, a major study performed by Trinity Consultants found that Smash My Trash reduces carbon dioxide emissions by more than 155 million pounds nationwide annually. This is equivalent to removing more than 15,000 cars from the road. An average Smash My Trash customer reduces carbon emissions by 18,000 pounds annually. As an independent local business owner who calls his community home, I represent a brand that operates across 42 states, serving more than 10,000 customers. Here in California, we have been operating in cities like Sacramento and Los Angeles since 2020. Unlike all the other cities we operate in, in Livermore, my business is categorized as a compactor, which means that the companies using our service have to pay close to three times what they typically pay for hauling. A compactor is usually a static stationary machine installed on site to compact a specific type of waste. Smash My Trash, on the other hand, is a fully mobile service that travels around town shredding waste, essentially removing air from open-top dumpsters to improve efficiency. Since the city of Livermore hauling price already charges additional price per ton, I humbly request the mayor and council members to seriously consider providing an exemption to operate Smash My Trash within the city of Livermore as a mobile compaction service, as opposed to a traditional stationary compactor, thereby helping accelerate the Livermore Climate Action Plan and enable local businesses to save money on their hauling costs. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak today and for your generous consideration. I'm also happy to provide you any additional information or even a live demo for this council to learn more about this business. Thank you.
The next speaker is Trish Monroe, followed by Mary Perner.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, and city manager and staff. I am here to speak about traffic. I've just returned from spending a month in Israel where I discovered that, unlike the U.S., complete streets are actually a thing. Everywhere I went, there were people walking, people on scooters, people on bikes, people in cars, people taking trains, people taking buses. By the way, there were lots and lots of buses. They were all full. Very, very different from the experience. You have to start the timer. So, okay. I won't take the full time, I promise. It's very different. I came back to the U.S. at San Francisco at SFO and to, I don't know, what is it, 12 lanes across? It's clear that in the U.S., cars are king. And that's not different in Livermore. We can, and I think we are, making progress on our transportation plan. And so I want to transition to the local project that's taking place this week that's very near and dear to my heart, and that is the pilot program of looking at making East Avenue something that will build community, that will be a complete street or closer to a complete street for all. People are out there, volunteers, community members are out there helping the pilot program to see what will work. I was out there this afternoon painting. I know that there's other people in this room who have signed up for later on this week. So I encourage people to sign up, and then on Friday, as we inaugurate the pilot program, come on out, and let's get excited about making complete streets in Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you. It's 4 o'clock Friday at East Avenue School, I believe, is the inauguration. Is that correct? Okay, 4 o'clock, East Avenue School on Friday. See you there.
The next speaker is Mary Perner.
Good evening, council and staff. Trish.
You stole my topic.
I was out of town this weekend, and coming back on the 30-hour bus, I entered East Avenue and saw all kinds of evidence that there was work happening with East Avenue Corridor Project, and I was just thrilled, really, really happy. I live within a stone's throw of East Avenue and have been advocating for this project since 2019. I will be volunteering on Thursday morning from 9:00 until noon. I recruited a friend. I was delighted to see that one of my former students is also at the same corner, and it is so exciting to see it all taking place. I can't wait to see more traffic calming measures being taken place. I walk on East Avenue very frequently, once or twice a day. Bicycles endanger me. Motorized scooters endanger me on the sidewalk. Hopefully, all of this will change soon. I want to add to this that alternative measures of transportation so that we are not so much of a car city are available. In Redwood City, where I was staying this morning, as I was getting on Caltrans, I saw motorized scooters lined up by the Caltrans and downtown, ready for people to share and get themselves around town. And I look forward to the day when Livermore can engage some of these devices to calm traffic, eliminate vehicle emissions, and do what it takes to become more like the situation that Trish just described. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much for your comments tonight. Let me get to where I need to be here. Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, we're going to close the open forum and move into consent calendar. These are items that are typically routine in nature. And does anyone have any questions or any items that they wish pulled for discussion? Councilmember Branning.
I just have a brief comment because I had a few people reach out for me. On item 5.4, just for the public to know, that is beginning the process of setting up objective design guidelines in line with the state's mandates and requirements. So that's just for anyone who's been sending me emails about that. We are starting the process.
And that was the Development Code amendments.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Anything else anybody would wish to pull for discussion? Seeing nothing, I'd be willing to entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. Any public comment?
No comment has been received.
Okay, thanks for keeping me honest. I appreciate that. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. There is no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Branning, seconded by Vice Mayor Kik. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos.
Hi.
Councilmember Branning.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kik.
Hi.
Mayor Marchand.
Hi. Moving on to public hearings, we have a hearing to receive and consider protest and direct staff to proceed with field abatement work for noncompliant properties on the Hazard Abatement Program. We have Chief Joe Testa and Deputy Chief Fire Marshal Ryan Rucker, and the city manager.
Honorable Mayor, you said it. Item 6.1 is going to be presented by Deputy Fire Chief Ryan Rucker and the Fire Chief Joe Testa. Thank you. Honorable mayor, you said it. Item six point one is going to be presented by our deputy fire chief, Ryan Rucker, and the fire chief, Joe Testa. Thank you.
I don't want to just step over you there.
Good evening, honorable mayor, and council members. I'm Ryan Rucker, Fire Marshal for the Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department. On March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, the city council adopted resolution number twenty twenty-three thirty-five, the Fire Hazard Abatement Program, which advises parcel owners of the need to abate hazardous debris and vegetation. Abatement standards have been mailed to the owner of record, current occupant, or posted conspicuously on the property in cases where a mailing address was insufficient. Property owners can avoid hazard abatement program enforcement by completing abatement work in accordance with guidelines or protest the need to abate hazards at this public hearing. The cost incurred for nuisance abatements and any assessments will be confirmed by the council at a future meeting. Staff recommends that the council, the city council, consider any and all protests, and if council finds it appropriate, adopt a resolution overruling protests and direct staff to proceed with necessary weed abatement of all parcels as required. Staffs available for questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have public comment?
No comment has been received.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Does the council have any questions or comments?
I do. I just want to appreciate, last year, there was a little bit of a mix-up with addresses. I appreciate that in the report, you noted where there was an address change and how you reached out to everybody, so thank you for that. And based on the fact that there's no one here to protest that I see, I think it went well. So thanks for taking that feedback and including it this year.
You want to make a motion?
Oh, sure. I move approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Kik, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Entos?
Hi.
Councilmember Branning?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kik?
I.
Mayor Marshawn?
Hi. Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate, appreciate the report. Moving on to matters for consideration, resolution receiving the annual review of military equipment. All right, we have Captain Boberg. And Chief Young.
Who know your name, Jess?
Here we go.
There should be good to share. All right, looks like we're ready. Good evening, honorable mayor, city council members. Jason Boberg, your police captain, here to present a presentation on military equipment ordinance and the annual report summary. So beginning in twenty twenty-two, the California Government Code required law enforcement to bring forward for review to any legislative body, including council or county representatives, an equipment policy by ordinance for council consideration and renewal on an annual basis. The initial military equipment policy was adopted by council in April of twenty twenty-two. The law requires council oversight related to the funding, acquisition, and use of certain types of equipment deemed military equipment by the law. So there are fourteen different specific items or categories listed in the law, and there's a fifteenth catch-all, which is any other item that the council would like to see tracked in a similar fashion. Not all of those categories apply to the Livermore Police Department. In fact, very few of them do. Tonight, we'll be focusing on the items that we do possess and utilize at the police department. So what does this look like here in town? The first one is our armored rescue vehicle. That's a ballistically protected utility truck. It's meant to get personnel and equipment closer to dangerous scenes so that they can engage in their duties. And the next slide has the interior of that vehicle, which is just some bench seating and area for equipment storage. Moving on, we have the community outreach vehicle, which I'm sure you guys are all familiar with. That's our mobile command post that is also used as community outreach, as it says, and as a mobile dispatching center. The next slide has the interior of that vehicle. The next one, the next items specified in the law that we do utilize is an unmanned ground vehicle. So that's a remote-controlled vehicle with a camera system. The next one is an unmanned aerial system or UAS. I'm going to spend the next few slides talking more about UASs because this is an area that we'd like to explore for implementation of a local program, and I'll go into more information on that. That's not occurring tonight as seeking authorization. That'll be at a future council date, so this is more of an information sharing. So historically, the Livermore Police Department has utilized the Alameda County Sheriff's Office UAS program that was provided free of charge. ACSo has recently made some changes that limit the availability of their services, and they've also discussed implementing a fee schedule or fee structure for use of those services. We don't have access to what those fees might be at this point. To the best of our knowledge, those are undefined. So this is a time where we think it might be, you know, looking at the value that we've seen in the past utilizing UASs and the changes that have gone on, it looks like it's a good time to review the possibility of moving forward with a local program. The benefits of the proposal would include increased availability of the UASs. Sorry, let me get there. Greater efficiency in providing services to the community, increased operational capabilities, increased situational awareness, leading to potentially better outcomes. That's an important point because the more information that we have at a scene, the better decisions that we can make, hopefully leading to better outcomes for everybody involved. Also, it would provide us with greater internal control of related data, so the footage, so we'd have control over that. Operators would be licensed by the FAA and would be trained to utilize the UASs in compliance with all applicable laws and regulations. Some suggested uses of UASs, they go beyond just looking for bad guys. They do include public safety and preservation of life missions, including barricaded suspects, area searches, hostage situations, active shooter situations, high-risk search and arrest warrant services, lost or missing persons, disaster response, suspected explosive devices, hazardous material releases, crime or collision scene documentation, mass gatherings or special events where security concerns exist or criminal activity is occurring, like a sideshow event would be an example, or in support of the Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department or any other entity such as other city departments or outside agencies, if the underlying mission matches use parameters. In order to address privacy concerns, any policy would have to look at considerations such as prohibiting the use of the UASs unless there's supervisory approval within the scope outlined in the policy. They would not be utilized to conduct random patrols or surveillance. They would not be used to routinely monitor mass gatherings, protests, or demonstrations where there are no security concerns or crimes occurring. Operators would be trained to minimize or mitigate viewing and recording in areas that have a reasonable expectation of privacy, unless that area is the focus of the investigation and there's some legal reason to view that area, such as search warrant exigency or consent from the property owner. UASs usage would be tracked and reported to the public and to the council in the annual military equipment report. We would retain the related data or footage and have the ability to control that for related retention or release considerations. And also, we could redact data prior to release if there was a legal reason or privacy concern. Program costs, if we were to go forward with this, just to give you some idea of what it would cost. Staff, a small working group was put together to come up with some general proposals. They suggested nine, the purchase of nine UASs of different sizes, so different capabilities, for a total of about thirty-five thousand dollars for the nine units. There's additional hardware that needs to support that, like batteries, different types of cameras, spotlights, remote controls, and viewers. Total hardware cost is approximately fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and two dollars. There are additional costs that are kind of recurring and ongoing related to pilot training, pilot licensing, data storage, flight software, and other miscellaneous items. Total five-year term agreement or program would include about seventy-three thousand dollar initial cost, and then about fourteen thousand five hundred dollars going forward thereafter for each additional year. And once again, just to clarify, we'll come back at another meeting and would seek authorization and move forward on that. That tonight is just the information sharing as part of the military equipment report. For now, it's status quo, and we would continue to call the sheriff's office. I don't know if the availability is currently, but we would continue, like I said, with normal operations. Moving on to other equipment, the patrol rifle is issued to each officer after they complete the specified training. And then we have three different types of kinetic energy weapons or kinetic energy projectiles, which are meant to be a less lethal force option, hopefully to de-escalate or use a lesser amount of force. So the first one is the FN three oh three that you see on the screen that shoots a plastic kind of breakable projectile with a fine powder inside. The different colors represent different capabilities. The yellow and pink are paint marking. It's like a paintball. And then the orange one up front can deliver basically a pepper spray to a very localized area. And then the other ones are inert or don't have any other capabilities. Then moving on, the beanbag shotgun has a fine powder instead of a sock-type device or beanbag. This utilizes an impact weapon. Then moving on to the last one, we have a forty-millimeter kinetic energy launching system, which utilizes a dense foam tipped munition. So it's just that blue part that you can see there on the screen. Don't worry, we are getting towards the end. I know this is exciting stuff. The next ones are utilized by the SWAT team only for specialized training purposes. The first one, the black canister up there is a flashbang or noise flash diversionary device, which is exactly what it sounds like. Makes a loud bang noise, flash of light, can be disorienting and distracting, giving us the opportunity to utilize other tactics. Then the white canister is CS smoke, otherwise known as tear gas commonly. The next one, under the law, we're required to report on any breaching apparatuses that are explosive in nature. We have none. But I did include this because it's as close as we get. It's a kinetic breaching tool, which utilizes a secure blank to force a kind of a spade, metal spade forward out of the front of the device, forcing a door open and then retracting right back into the device, so it doesn't shoot out any kind of projectile. But it does assist greatly in opening like school doors, hospital doors, metal doors, that type of stuff that would be difficult to do with a manual breaching equipment. And then we have kind of a summary of usage. The report, the twenty twenty-two report was attached as an agenda attachment. But just to kind of cover it, we had about fifty-six thousand incidents over twenty twenty-two that the police department handled. Kinetic energy projectiles were used in three incidents. The armored rescue vehicle was used on eleven occasions. The unmanned aerial or ground vehicles were used on eight occasions. And that also includes merged SWAT team operations with the Pleasanton Police Department that may have occurred in Pleasanton. Expenditures, these are usually just recurring costs to either resupply of ammunition or munitions or replacing older weapons that are getting, you know, out of their functional period, and averages around thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars per year for that purpose. There's that bump in that mid-year. That includes just the base units of the proposed UAS program. And then once again, that's only the base unit. It's not all the peripheral costs. Then all this information is regularly supplied on our website under the transparency and information page, including the inventory, the annual report, and our policy, and also a portal for any comments or questions. That goes to our professional standards unit. We've conducted additional outreach and transparency efforts, including a comprehensive presentation to the chief's advisory group in February on the UAS program, just to see if we get feedback from them before we took it any further. At that point, the feedback was positive. In March, we updated the website to include the new inventory and the annual report for public consumption. And then staff hosted a public community meeting also in March. The chief's advisory group attended that, as well as any members of the public that were interested. It was publicized on social media, specifically nextdoor.com, in which we have about forty-three thousand registered users. It was also on the LPD lobby's public bulletin board as a flyer and on the department's website. Staff has responded to one inquiry on the transparency page related to this topic, and that occurred after the public meeting from somebody who attended that had some follow-up questions. At that point, that concludes the presentation. We're open for any questions. And staff is recommending that council adopts the twenty twenty-two annual equipment report, determines whether or not the identified equipment complies with the city's policy, and then reviews and votes whether to renew the ordinance.
Captain, chief, thank you very much. Do you have any public comment?
No comment has been received.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Carling?
Yeah, thanks for that report, Jason. The only thing that would be new that the department would own would be the UASs that you're proposing, right?
Yes, we've used them for years, but through the sheriff's office.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that's the only thing we're talking about adding in the future, the nine drones, if you will. The other question I think would be important when you bring this back to us is you talked about having eight uses in the last year, I think you said? And now you're proposing to buy nine. I think it'd be important to articulate how the four people that concluded we need nine, and admittedly, it's a mix of sizes.
Yes.
But I think it'd be important to bring that information back to us. I know today's not the right time to do that. I'm just suggesting that when you do come back requesting our approval of that, that you pretty clearly state why you think nine is the appropriate number. I think that'd be very important. I think the other thing that I know you mentioned to me when I had my briefing with you is most of it is on situational awareness and looking for people that, for example, might be thrown from a vehicle. Again, I think those are important points to be made to the public, that this isn't only about looking for a stolen car or a person that is being chased by police and so on. That the vast majority of the times are for public safety and trying to understand the situation that the public may be exposed to. And sometimes, you know, bad things happen when we have accidents, vehicle accidents, and people can get thrown. And I know there's an example of a missing person here a few months, maybe a year ago, and it was a tragic situation, but it was, it was a drone with an IR sensor on it would have been very useful in that case. So I think those are important points, my suggestions when you bring that information back, but thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Are there any questions or comments? Vice Mayor?
Nope.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, thank you for this. I appreciate in the report, is this report, I know the law mandates that you do this report, but is the the layout of the report mandated, or is that?
No, this is all actually fairly new for everybody involved, so we're definitely open to any kind of suggestions. We're trying to figure it out as we go along. I think as the years progress, the reports will get more refined.
Well, I wanted to commend, the report looks beautiful, but that's just, you know, doesn't really matter, but it does. And, but I appreciated that we were able to see every time one of these uses were used, what it was for, you know, whether it worked or not. I think that's important. If we eventually buy something and turns out every, every time we use it, it doesn't work, that would be important information. I also wanted to just give some feedback about the potential drone policy. Again, repeating, we're not approving anything right now. You're giving us a heads up that you'll come back with this later. I would love to make sure that any large purchase I I would love to make sure that any large purchase um of technology is not um just for police use. I've seen other cities use drones um for public works functions, for community development functions, and making sure that whatever policy we build is broad enough um and that whoever is trained is trained in a broad enough spectrum so that it can best serve the community at all times, because fingers crossed, we don't have a lot of reasons for police to use it, right? So um if we can make sure that we address those issues um and are clear in the training that, yes, you need to know how to use this. Um, and yes, maybe this is coming from whatever line and a budget um from the police, but that this is applicable to the following situations and that it'll help us reach other city goals.
Yes.
Okay, any questions, comments? Um, okay, recognizing that these are tools. And as the vice mayor pointed out, what's important is the policy behind the use of those tools. And I think that's something that we're going to continue to work together with the public. Two things I think were extremely important that uh um made me made made mention is that uh last year uh there was an independent analysis that was done on the Livermore Police Department, which concluded that Livermore Police Department is fair and unbiased in its interactions with the public. Uh, I think that is remarkable, and I don't, I I don't know of any other agency uh that would allow itself to undergo that that type of scrutiny. But uh, that's remarkable and you're, it's commendable. Uh, also in the report, uh, we had in in twenty twenty-two, zero community complaints uh from this this uh report uh and uh zero internal investigations. Uh, so again, I'd like to commend you on the the great work that you're doing uh with with this department. Uh, so with that, if there's no further questions or comments, uh, I'm looking for a a motion for the ordinance on the ordinance. Uh, moved by Councilmember Barrientos?
Second.
Uh, yeah, on the city, uh, the
So you have you have a motion by Barrientos and second by Carling. Just to clarify, this is approving of a resolution making those findings.
I know, but I couldn't resist. Sorry. Okay, so they're approving the resolution, yes. Anything else? So you got a motion made by Barrientos, seconded by Councilboard Carling, any discussion? Real call, please.
Councilmember Barrientos?
Hi.
Councilmember Branning?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kik?
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn?
Aye. Uh, moving on to uh seven point two, this is discussion in direction regarding a comprehensive uh general plan update, the land use alternatives evaluations uh and a resolution amending the general plan advisory committee rules of procedure.
Honorable Mayor Marshawn and members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Marashova. Item seven point two is going to be presented by economic development manager Andy Ross with the assistance of planning manager Steve Stewart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariana, and good evening, Mayor Marshawn and members of the city council. I think I can speak for Mr. Stewart myself. We're excited to be here to give you an update on the general plan update um and some of the progress we've made uh over the last couple of months since we've uh visited you last time last fall. So just really quickly, uh, tonight's presentation will give a status report on what we've accomplished thus far and what we're currently working on, and then present new information to the council, including um some information about the general plan advisory committee rules procedure, and then some information we've received from the committee and others in the community about an area known as east of Greenville Road. Uh, we'll follow up with our staff recommendations and of course, take any questions you may have. Um, so we started this uh process, this work program in twenty twenty-one. And one of the first tasks we embarked upon was visioning. Uh, we created a vision statement with community input uh that sets um articulates what Livermore will be and look like and function as in the future, looking at time horizon of twenty forty-five. Uh, simultaneously, we uh conducted extensive research and analysis, uh, creating what we call existing conditions reports, or you can think of them as baseline reports that kind of capture what the current state of things are now. And then another major milestone we've completed is the housing element update. Uh, just last month, council reviewed the housing element uh and adopted that element and directed staff to submit it to the state, and the state has since responded uh that that housing element is in compliance with applicable state laws. So currently, we are working on uh our land use alternatives evaluation. You may recall that last September, uh, council reviewed a suite of alternatives in different focus areas uh within the city and then directed uh the project team to evaluate uh those alternatives against a set of metrics and identify uh potential trade-offs and impacts associated with those uh land use alternatives so that we can facilitate a community conversation and ultimately get to a preferred general plan land use map. We've also can uh kicked off our policy development discussions. We've presented to our general plan advisory committee uh a matrix of our existing general plan, goals, objectives and policies uh for them to evaluate, uh to opine on what is still relevant, what needs modification and some new themes or topics uh that we should be considering as we develop a new policy framework for the general plan. Uh, and then lastly, we've also started our general plan EIR process or environmental impact report process. We've issued a public notice, which has since closed, asking for community input and input from public agencies on what topic areas the general plan uh EIR should study and evaluate. We will take all those components and combine them into one draft general plan document, which of course will present uh to the city council at a future date for review and adoption. So moving on to our general plan advisory committee and the rules procedure. Uh, early on in the process, uh, in uh the summer of twenty twenty-one, the council uh initiated a comprehensive recruitment uh process for an advisory committee that would advise uh both the project team and city council on um aspects of the general plan update process that were important to uh the community and trying to capture a broad range perspectives. Uh, the council appointed nineteen members to that committee and adopted rules procedure that established a quorum of ten members. Currently, our membership is at thirteen, and staff is recommending revising the rules procedure and establishing a quorum of a majority of the current membership.
Mr. Mayor and the city council to that item, that would be accomplished by reducing the number of seats on the advisory body down to thirteen. That would naturally reduce the amount that necessary for a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Cola. Um, next up, uh, we wanted to share some new information on um and some feedback we've been receiving from our general plan advisory committee and also uh the business community. So since uh we met with council in September of last year, the general plan advisory committee has continued to meet monthly uh reviewing um elements and topic areas that are important to or related to the general plan, um studying uh different aspects uh of um of our future land use alternatives evaluation. And so they're very well positioned to consume that information when we have that report uh ready. But on February eighth, we held a uh workshop of sorts where uh the committee was broken into small groups and they discussed amongst themselves the various uh elements of the general plan and shared their feedback and thoughts about new themes and topics that the project team should consider. And that was followed uh followed up by a meeting in March where subject matter experts presented information about the Southmore Valley uh and our tourism and hospitality sectors. So this is on the slide is a summary of some of the feedback we heard from our general plan advisory committee as well as from our business community. And so this first one uh about the theme of identity, in addition to being known um as uh for our rich agricultural history and a vibrant cultural arts community and quality urban design, the general plan advisory committee suggested that we add to that list as part of the Livermore identity uh leadership in innovation and science and technology. Uh, the general plan advisor committee also suggested that we look at a policy framework to ensure long-term investment and sustainability of the Southmore Valley, in particular, uh, the wine region and um land uses related to tourism and hospitality. Uh, the general plan advisor committee also suggested that we explore ways to replace the inventory of commercial and industrial lands that could be re-designated for residential uses in the focus areas. And so um this is particularly um in the areas of South Front Focus Area and Vasco Road as those alternatives contemplate transitioning some of these commercial and industrial land uses into other uses, including residential. Uh, initial assessments of our uh focus area evaluation show that somewhere between eighty and one hundred and forty acres of land that is designated for industrial land uses uh could be converted to residential or another land use. Uh, this includes areas that may have already been built with industrial uses and structures or those that are operating with industrial uses such as outdoor storage. Um, but really that there are few undeveloped or vacant sites in the focus areas. Uh, and this is a concept that's shared by the business community and have asked for additional areas of expansion, uh citing just that there is a limited land inventory of industrial designated land um that many of these companies would like to continue to grow in Livermore uh and reach their full potential, but they're finding it challenges just due to limited space and capacity. The next topic that was brought up by the general plan advisory committee was ensuring a jobs housing match and balancing our in and out commuting commuting. Um, so this is essentially pairing our real estate market with our jobs market, ensuring that we have both a spectrum of housing choice and employment opportunities. So it's two sides of the same coin, essentially that for those who work in Livermore that they can afford to live in Livermore, so that's the housing piece. And then the other side of that is for those who can afford to live in Livermore uh that they have opportunity to work here as well, and they don't necessarily have to commute uh into the Interbay or Silicon Valley to uh uh obtain the wages that they're accustomed to. So that's the jobs piece. The other uh theme we heard from the general plan advisory committee was to explore opportunities uh for higher education facilities, particularly universities, and to explore research campuses in partnership with uh the laboratories that exist here, all in a pursuit of ensuring that we maintain and attract high-quality jobs for Livermore. All this is uh wrapped up in the last bullet point. Um, the committee and members of our business community suggest that we um could should explore growth opportunities to achieve all these topics um and look at uh new industrial campuses or in industrial-type environments east of Greenville Road. So we're looking on the screen, this is the current focus area map. And if you can see my cursor, this is five eighty right here, and this is downtown Livermore Avenue and Tesla Road. I just mentioned Greenville a moment ago, that's Greenville Road on the east side. Each one of these colored polygons represent a focus area, and each of the focus areas have uh different land use alternatives that your project team is currently evaluating. Uh, this is the area, um geographic area east of Greenville Road or potential east of Greenville study area. It's uh, as the name suggests, east side of Greenville Road, and it's also outside uh the city limits and the city's urban growth boundary. Uh, but it is within the city's planning area and uh sphere of influence. So the planning area signals to the county and other surrounding jurisdictions that this area is important to the city and it's part of our vision and that we should have some policy influence on what happens in this area, and that would come in the form of project review or environmental document review. Or severe influence, on the other hand, signals that eventually this territory would become part of the city uh or annexed uh sometime into the future, uh and that it would make sense for the city to provide municipal services to this area. And this is established through the local agency formation commission or LAFCO, and that commission reviews uh these boundaries on a five-year cycle as part of their municipal services review program. So this is an aerial of that geographic area uh if we zoomed in. So just to orient us, this is uh five eighty up here. And this is Greenville Road and Tesla Road. This line that meanders north-south is the South Bay Aqueduct. And so most of this area in the central part of the region is uh relatively flat and undeveloped. Uh, if we look to the northern portion of the area, there are some industrial uses on the east side of Greenville that are within the county, and the topography starts to change. Um, and there's terrain and hills and um uh changes from a flat area to a more um sloped area. To the east, there's uh hills as part of the Altamont uh range, and then to the south as well. There's hills and slopes, and it's adjacent to and part of or considered part of South Livermore Valley. And so all this is, all this on the east side is under the jurisdiction of Alameda County. Uh, but the road itself does serve as an access point to Livermore wine country. Uh, does have an opportunity to be enhanced as a gateway to wine country, which is also a theme that was brought up by the advisory committee. Uh, you can see on this aerial, uh, it is adjacent to an existing uh industrial uh part of the city as well as um adjacent to the labs. To the south, as I just mentioned, it's adjacent to South Livermore. Um, and according to a UC Davis study that was commissioned by Tri Valley Conservancy, part of this area is suitable for high-quality grape growing uh and production. So if council was to direct staff to include this uh new focus area in the land use evaluation, it would add some time to the project schedule. Um, but we think uh we could get uh an administrative draft for the project team to review uh sometime in June and then publish that document on the project website and share it with the community in July and August, and then commence with public outreach efforts, including workshops, uh pop-up events like the farmer's market and street festival, online activities and focused stakeholder group meetings. Uh, we'd also meet with the G-PAC through a series of workshop meetings, all within the intent, again, to uh create a general plan land use map, a preferred land use scenario. And we would take that to the planning commission in September and seek their recommendation to the city council, uh, which we present in October. And so at that this point, staff recommends that the city council receive uh this update report from staff uh and also adopt a resolution that would amend the general plan advisory committee rules procedure that would reduce the total number of committee members to thirteen and also adjust the quorum uh to to a majority of the membership. Uh, and then lastly, direct staff to include this geographic area east of Greenville Road in the land use evaluation, and we'd take any other direction you may have around that topic. Uh, and that these actions are consistent with the council's five-year strategic plan pillars and goals. And that concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, do you have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. We have com- come- commenters, excuse me, on Zoom. The first speaker is going to be Carol Silva, followed by Gene King, followed by David B. Kent. Carol Souza, please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you for allowing public comment on this. Um, the staff report dated September twelfth, twenty twenty-two, which is attachment one to this agenda item. And also attachment number two, the memo that stated February twenty-four, twenty twenty-three from Placeworks state that there are four air focus areas to explore a range of commercial, industrial and residential growth. Those four areas are East Avenue and Vasco Focus Area. Second one is Las Pecitas Court. Third is Laughlin Road. Fourth is South Front Vasco. So these two attachments did not mention the Greenville area. And the likely reason for that is that the area east of Greenville Road was not um is outside the urban uh growth boundary line for the city. Um, it didn't mention the Greenville area until attachment three, which is the feedback summary from the general uh plan advisory committee, which is not dated. But um I believe this area is also zoned by the city for lord, large parcel agriculture. Um, Livermore put in place its urban growth boundary. I do not want to see the city's urban growth boundary broken because it becomes a precedent for other companies besides top con positioning systems to request such treatment, and that wouldn't, could include areas in south and north um Livermore. If the urban growth boundary is broken, then the community's desire to control growth within the urban growth boundary is devalued. Please do not alter the urban growth boundary. Thank you.
The next speaker is Gene King, followed by David B Kent, followed by Lori Souza. Gene King, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I ask you to reject recommendation number two. Do not direct staff to include the geographic area east of Greenville Road. That area is not within the Livermore UGB urban growth boundary. In the years leading up to the last update in two thousand and three, there were the same concerns as today, growth, housing, commercial sustainability, resources and open space conservation. In two thousand, with the proposal of massive housing developments in the Livermore Valley, the citizens wrote a county initiative, measure D, that established a county urban growth boundary and land designations in the non-urban areas of the county to protect agriculture, resources and waterlands. The county voters passed measure D. Urbanization was restricted to the cities in the county. Changes must be approved by the voters. In two thousand and two, the citizens of Livermore qualified an initiative to establish a UGB for the city of Livermore. Changes must be approved by the Livermore voters. In two thousand and five, Housing Developer Party put a par proposal on the ballot to move the UGB to allow a development in North Livermore. It was defeated by the Livermore voters seventy two to twenty eight percent. Open space and Livermore's UGB are strongly supported by the citizens of Livermore, and it has not been challenged since two thousand and five. In two thousand and twenty two, city ballot measure allowed a very strictly defined city sewer service in the South Livermore Valley. It did not move the location of the Livermore UGB. In two thousand and twenty two, county vote on measure D increased the floor area allowed for agricultural buildings, but did not move the UC UGB. Livermore has resisted urban sprawl and instead has a vibrant downtown and is surrounded by vineyards, agricultural lands, protected habitat and open space. East of Greenville should be kept as ag areas and open space, not industrial areas. County measure D and Livermore UGB are very important in preserving agriculture and open space in our valley. Once a UGB is moved, it may be hard to stop from moving it again and again. Remember the fable that once the camel's nose is in the tenth, the rest will likely follow. Balance commercial, industrial, housing and open space in these four areas inside the UGB. But do not consider the land east of Greenville Road and violate the UGB. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is David B Kent, followed by Lori Souza, followed by David Rounds. David B Kent, please unmute yourself.
Thank you, City Council. I had the honor of being appointed by the last council to the GPAC. And it's been a great experience. I'd like to commend Andy Ross for for doing a great job of herding the cats. We have a very diverse committee and have had very active involvements. In fact, I would encourage the last two speakers to attend these meetings and understand really what the thinking is behind this general plan and the recommendations of GPAC. One of the first things we learned was that over the last few decades, the city of Livermore has lost over half of its jobs housing match. That means less than fifty fifty percent less Livermore residents currently live and work in Livermore. Now, the the solution for that is clear. We need more affordable housing, we need more housing and we need more high paying jobs. And but the issue of getting, I think, the housing element can be done with infill development without any movement of the urban growth boundary for housing. And that's pretty clear, we're good for this cycle and for the next two cycles as well. However, we're down to less than a hundred acres of light industrial land. That's really technology parkland when we talk about it. We can't retain and attract high quality jobs, which is what this general plan that we're currently under and the next one are going to continue to encourage. We can't do that unless we replace this inventory. Housing is an important element. We've spent a lot of time in GPAC on housing. And the east of Greenville proposal has many aspects, but housing is not one of them. We want to refine the line. There are areas inside the urban growth boundary that are absolutely better off as open space, as parkland and as habitat preservation. Those are mostly the Bart lands. But if we want to restore the inventory of light industrial land, you know, we're going to have to look at some of this county land, which has had toxic levels of commercial development, poorly planned, poorly permitted, if permitted at all. And the city can really step in and fix this. We want to retract the urban growth boundary from lands with high conservation values and expand them out on the flatlands that are west of the canal. This will allow us to do several things, including, you know, the ability to attract and retain good businesses and open and open campus for the labs and many other things as well. It also has some, an opportunity south of Lupin Road to expand the South Livermore Valley specific plan to attract midsize wineries. There are some very good sites there that could be developed. So there's no residential housing here being discussed. TVC would like to participate in the protection of open space east of the canal and create a permanent eastern boundary. We have one in the south to the city, but the Greenville issue was never addressed and it needs to be done. And this is the opportunity, this general plan we're working on to do this. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lori Souza, followed by David Rounds, followed by Donna Cabane. Lori Souza, please unmute yourself.
Honorable Mayor, City Council and staff, I'm Lori Souza, currently serving as the Chair of the Board of the Tri Valley Conservancy. I wanted to express our appreciation for the fine work being accomplished by the General Plan Advisory Committee and staff. We support the recommendation to direct staff to include the geographic area east of Greenville Road in the evaluation study for the general plan update. The TVC board is interested in opportunities for preserving more agricultural areas in this our South Livermore Valley region. And we endorse the recognition of the importance of conservation and revitalization efforts of the Livermore Wine Region. We would like to participate as appropriate in outlining possible policy considerations for the general plan update, including funding and financing opportunities, conservation programs and infrastructure investments. Thank you.
The next speaker is David Rounds, followed by Donna Cabane, followed by Alan Burnham. David Rounds, please unmute yourself.
All right. Thank you for the chance to speak on this. I agree that the General Plan Review Committee has done an excellent job. I do have a concern about the area east of Greenville. Because it's pretty clear that the reason that TopCon can't work with the county on that area is because the county knows that you can't put industrial development in open agricultural land that's protected by measure D. So having said that, TopCon's a great company. And there's some parts of Greenville Road that are pretty ugly from legacy businesses that were there prior to the major D. So any work that is done going forward to study this area will just raise the concern that, you know, where does, where does it stop? We only have a hundred acres of industrial space within the city that is or commercial space developable within the city. So where is the next boundary where there'll be a request by a landowner or a business or a developer to move the urban growth boundary to accommodate additional businesses? So anyway, thank you. That's my concern.
The next speaker is Donna Cabane, followed by Alan Burnham. Donna Cabane, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, City Council members. I urge the City Council to only consider studying alternative A, B and C. There is no need to study the area east of Greenville Road at this time. The area east of Greenville Road should remain agricultural lands. We don't have an infinite supply of lands that can be used for agricultural protection, production. And we should protect those lands. So again, I urge you to only focus on alternative A, B and C. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is, excuse me, Alan Burnham.
Between the A station and and the and the new Valley Link. So that that actually is land that's currently industrial. Part of the one in the northeast corner is actually going to be recommended mostly for open space because it needs to be protected, housing, excuse me, protected habitat. Now, Mr. Ross did an outstanding job of outlining the issues. What didn't happen twenty years ago is having the state mandate thousands of new housing units for the city of Livermore. If you, if you read Mr. Ross's document, what you see is that the the state mandates that are expected during our general plan are going to pretty much soak up all the land that we have for housing, which means that we will be driving industry out and that the jobs housing balance is actually going to go below one. I, I urge you to pay attention to the outstanding staff report that was presented to you and move forward with this study of the Greenville area. Now, Gene King, as you know, was very much involved in the South Livermore plan. There can be a plan comparable to that to the east of Livermore, protecting some areas permanently in in exchange for other things. All these things should be on the table to be discussed. There are no decisions being made tonight on any specific zoning issues. Be clear about that. This is only, should one actually think about the issue? And I find it rather troublesome that people say, no, you should not be allowed to think about this in for the next twenty five years. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing then. Let's start with a couple of comments here. Yeah, we're not talking about moving the urban growth. The urban growth ground, but growth boundary cannot move without a vote of the public. So when there were speakers tonight saying that, that the council must not do this, the council can't, very simply. This is going to be up to the voters. And as Mr. Burnham pointed out, this is about taking a look at this and seeing if, seeing if this makes sense. Judged by who's doing the calculations, we're down to about the last fifty acres of of manufacturing and industrial land. And we saw the letter in the packet tonight from TopCon. I have personally gone out and talked to another, the newly arrived manufacturers like Monarch, Monarch Tractor. And we were at a fascinating discussion, the game changers, the other night. And there was a man there, Sanjeev Malhotra, a company called Sparks. And he's developing a cobalt free battery. And he's talking about a million square feet that they may need. That's a lot of land. And these are companies that we want to be able to attract to Livermore. And again, as Mr. Burnham pointed out, the state is mandating this latest cycle, forty five hundred housing units. And so we've, we're, that's in our housing element. Those people are going to need a place to work. And otherwise, they're going to end up back on the freeways. And this, this jobs housing match, slightly different, used to be called a jobs housing balance, what we talked about. But we're trying to work on is just jobs housing match. And there are some tremendous opportunities here to to expand agriculture, to conserve agriculture, to fund the, these conservation easements. And this is why I think the Tri Valley Conservancy absolutely needs to be a partner as we move ahead with this conversation, this discussion about what makes sense. One of the speakers said that this land should remain ag. Well, I would suggest that they go out there and take a look at the automobile junkyard that is located on this, in this area. That is not ag. It's, it's growing more and more cars as they sit there and rust in the, in the elements. So it makes sense to to look at this and and see what makes the most sense. I know that the, it does not make sense. This is not about housing. What this is, the, they were talking about tech space. When I was on the, the council, the first time, right? We were talking about the open campus at Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory to help them achieve the mission of the laboratory. And this was an area that was very, very important. This idea of expanding the open campus, maintaining the sufficient inventory of manufacturing and tech development. That's going to be something very, very important. But it's early now and let's just take a look at this and see if it makes sense. And then let's let the the data create the, the conversation around this to see what does make sense and what makes the as this, this process moves ahead. But this is the time to talk about it. I was in the first general plan, or I should say, the last general plan that we completed in in two thousand and two. And as, as Mr. Burnham pointed out, this was not something that was even considered because we didn't have these housing mandates. This is not about housing. It's about maintaining this inventory for manufacturing, for tech development, for and to see what areas make sense to conserve and how do we best conserve them? And how do we bring in the agriculture that we need? Some of these sites that we're going to be looking at are perfect for those types of uses for ag and for conservation. And that's why I pointed out, I think TVC makes all the sense in the world to be a partner in this. And we'd certainly encourage their, their, their partnership as well. So with that, I'm going to hand off to Councilmember Branding, who raised his hand.
Thank you very much. So I have questions on both parts really quickly. So first, with the changing of quorum, or I should say, the committee size down to thirteen members, is there a reason we're choosing not to backfill those positions? And could you explain that?
Sure. So the committee has met approximately twenty times over the course of eighteen months. And as we explained, they're really ramped up now with a lot of background information. It would be a bit of a challenge to stop the process and recruit and then bring those people up to speed. So it seems to make sense to move forward with the number we have.
Thank you. I agree, actually, but I've had a few people reach out with questions about that. We're pretty far along in the process at this point to bring in new members.
I would add, though, the meetings are public and have opportunity for public comments. We welcome people to come and participate.
Yes, thank you. And they're very informative for anyone who does have the opportunity. Highly recommend you go. I've learned a lot about the general plan from watching the meetings or listening, I should say. For the amendments for east of Greenville. So this would be changing our focus areas from four focus areas to five focus areas, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. And so with this, we're simply studying the area. We're not actually making any legislative changes. We're looking at what would be possible or the potential for the area, correct?
That is also correct, yes. All right.
And then I just basically wanted to check a few things about that area east of Greenville. So I do think it's an important area for us to look at. I agree with Mr. Burnham. There's nothing wrong with the thought experiment of whether or not this is a good idea. And as the mayor pointed out, this is not something that could be a council action. We can't simply decide to move the urban growth boundary. However, it does give us a lot of opportunities if we were to move the urban growth boundary to have better control over the land, actually. And so one of my questions would be, is it currently impossible for And so one of my questions would be, is it currently impossible for someone to come in and develop that land?
Someone can come in and apply to the county to develop the land in accordance with their rules. And some of that land is, as others stated, it's designated as large parcel ag.
Yeah. So currently, if someone applied to the county, they would be able to develop the land under the county's rules. And the city of Livermore would have no real say over what that development looked like.
That is true, other than as a commenting agency, yeah.
Yeah. So if we did decide that this was an area that was valuable for the city to incorporate and the voters approved that as an area that the residents would like to develop, it would give us better control of what it looked like. And with the current rules and policies we have looking forward, we're not looking to put in distribution hubs and low-paying jobs for this land. What we're looking for with this land and with really all of our industrial use is trying to find those high-value jobs, the ones that pay a living wage that are for a variety of skill levels, but really would allow someone to live in Livermore. Is that also correct?
Based on the feedback we got from the advisory committee, yes.
Yeah. And so what I want to say in summation of all of this is I think it's a really good idea for us to look at this as a possibility. I think it's important that we educate voters and receive feedback from them about what they think is valuable for this land. I think it's important that we do get the message out that this is looking to make a beautiful gateway to our city. So when people are entering, the first thing they see is not a junkyard, that we actually have a gateway entrance that is providing jobs, that will allow residents to stay in Livermore, that will really help boost the profile of our lab, of our campuses, of our industry, and really ultimately help Livermore be the shining star that it is and really just enhance the qualities that we already have. So I'm in support of us moving forward on all the items here. Thank you.
Comment, so question or kick?
So I agree with a lot of the things that that Branning said. This is not a resolution to move the UGB. We can't do this. Documentation about Greenville wasn't left out as a gotcha. It wasn't included in the first place. And the whole reason it was included is because we had 19 people that the council chose as people we thought could tell us things we didn't know. And it was brought up by that community group as a need. We're not trying to get anything past anybody. If you were to read carefully, you'd realize this was an addition where they're asking for an addition. Also, the idea that one company is the reason that we're doing this, I think, is a little bit silly. Unless staff would like to correct me, we are not having this conversation because we got one letter from TopCon. Is that correct?
That is correct. We are not doing this because of one letter.
Right. This is because of a a long conversation with a large group of people.
Correct.
And I I will say, when was the UGB voted on by the people? What year exactly?
2002.
2002. I was 12 years old. When I was 12 years old, I would not have imagined that we would have lived through a global pandemic, that we would have lived through multiple housing recessions, all these different crises. The world is different than it was in 2002. I'm not suggesting that we strip away the urban growth boundary. I am suggesting that we make decisions based on data about how the world is today, not how it was when I was a preteen. So please, we don't want 2002 me making any decisions. So let's not let 2002 data make decisions for us. That's all I have to say.
Congressman Curling?
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues that have spoken this evening. And I don't mean to harp on this, but this would go again to confirm, it would go on the ballot for the public to vote on. Correct? Yes.
Correct.
What I find remarkable is the people that have spoken against us tonight not to take it to the voters are the same people that supported a petition that wasn't considered lawful, and they wanted to take it to the public to vote. So I just, I mean, so they want it in their way and only their way. And I think the vice mayor made a good point. This isn't 2002, and we ought not to think about it in those terms. What do we need today to meet not only the the needs of the community, as Mr. Branning pointed out, in terms of the high-paying jobs? And I know that the leader of our Innovation Economic Development Department is working hard in making sure the jobs that we brought here, that we bring here pay a reasonable wage and provide a number of jobs. So I'm very much in favor of taking a look at this, and I appreciate all the hard work that the people on this committee have spent and not the people that spoke tonight, who haven't been attending the meetings or aren't on the committee. So let's take a look at it and see what we think. We'll bring it back to the council, and the council will decide whether or not we should put this on the ballot or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman Curling. Congressman Bariantos?
I'm the odd duck here. I can't support it. I appreciate the work and everything. I know the ideas. I know we've got to grow whatever people say. I know we're going to have 8 billion people on the planet, all that, okay? But I just think that once you start to study, I can tell you right now, you can give me the money that they're going to pay for this research that you're going to say build. I can already tell you that. That's what it's going to come down to. But I think the people voted twice, the county and the city, to have urban boundary. And once we break that boundary, it's going to be like a snowball going downhill. We're going to build more. I I keep hearing TopCon, yes, maybe a lot of acres and hoping that we would support their growth or their GPS. I'm not sure how many people can buy a house in that. I'm not sure if the salary is going to be there. I know the CEOs can buy houses here. You know, probably the top Epsilon can buy a house here, but I don't know about the rest of them. Probably going to trade here Patterson to buy a house. But I still can't support it. I think the people spoke, and they did it in 2005. We tried to to break the boundary then, and that was a 72 to 28% vote against building it. And I think once you open it up and say the study is going to be there, we're going it's going to go. It's just it's going to hard, it's going to be hard to stop once they say that, unless the public says, okay, we don't want it there, you know? And I think the public right now still wants it. That's why we're unique. We have open space. Think about Dublin. They want to build along that 580 a big industrial park, which by the houses. And we're afraid that they're going to jam in against us and take a lot of open space there, too. So I guess maybe that's the future, that we got to exist, you know? Humans need houses and jobs. And and I don't think these jobs are going to be, you know, high-paying jobs. Maybe a few of us here make more than teachers do. I was ready with the teacher salary. I couldn't afford a house here now, period. Two teachers couldn't afford a house here. Yeah. You know, maybe four or five can live in a nice house altogether, share a room and buy a house here. You know, I don't know what people think about, oh, we do have housing problems. And the housing problem is it costs a day much to live here. You know, I don't care, you know, what we're going to do, if the houses cost what they cost now, you can do whatever you want, and you're not going to help some of these people be afford some of these houses. The ones that afford them are the ones already here. You know, my house cost 250,000 bucks, and I thought that was a lot. Now it's a million. Then we keep thinking, oh, we want a single story, but we'd have to move out of the state to get a single story or way up north somewhere. Anyway, so I can't support 72. And I know some people are eloquent, they have a lot of stats and all that. But I'm feeling what the people feel. That's what I think. You know, I appreciate what you're doing, and, you know, it's no disparity on you, okay? You got a job, you're doing it, and great. And I, so I'm opposed to it.
Thank you, Congressman Bariantos. So personally, I support getting additional data, getting more information, as the vice mayor pointed out. A previous council appointed 19 people to represent this community, to gather information. That group has come back to this council and said that they're suggesting additional information that, based on what that informs us, to take that information back to the voters and see if this is something that the voters want. And I will absolutely support what the voters want. That's what we're sworn to do here. And that we represent the community, a previous council appointed a 19-member committee to do just that. And I support doing what the committee has recommended, and that's getting more information to support the community and the community's decision. So with that, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I will move staff recommendation because it is a true fact that in the future, people need houses and they need jobs, and they need them based on 2023 data.
I have a second.
Okay, and that includes the the modifications to the
All staff recommendations, including the number of people on the committee.
Okay. Move my vice mayor kick, seconded by Councilmember Curling. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bariantos?
Yeah. No.
Councilmember Branning?
Hi.
Councilmember Curling?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kick?
Aye.
Mayor Marchand?
Aye. Okay, the record show that it passes four to one. Steve, Andy, thank you very much. And again, congratulations on herding the cats on the on the general plan advisory committee. I mean, I survived the last one, as I've said before, I've got the scars to prove it. And I was on this one, and this one's working a lot. I'm really impressed with the the caliber of the discussion. The people in this group really are passionate about this. They're providing great input, and you're doing a great job of taking that input and then rolling with that information. So thank you very much. Item number eight, committee reports and matters initiated by the the council. You know, starting to say, Congressman Bariantos. Matters initiated, council reports, we've got the what came up from the city clerk, any anything to add?
About what I've done?
Yeah, anything that wasn't it wasn't in your in your report.
Oh, I just, I have been going to the airport commission meeting just to, you know, listen to what they're doing and didn't do too much last time. All I know is that Menon Hall is freezing cold during their meetings. So I went to that, and I enjoyed meeting and getting to know the people there.
Great, thank you. Congressman Branning?
Thank you.
Go to the different route this time.
No worries. So first of all, I did neglect on the last item. I do want to thank the G-PAC members for all their hard work. It's just really impressive, everything they've done. So want to retro on that. As far as matters initiated and report out, I just want to highlight one of the items from my report out, which is that I was given the opportunity to travel to Israel and Palestine for 10 days, which is why I was not at the last meeting. It was a very informative trip. The group that we went with really gave a lot of information about the complexities of the conflict between the two nations, some of the challenges with resolving that conflict, and being able to visit both Israel and Palestine and really see on the ground what is happening was very enlightening. So if anyone does have any questions about that or wants to know more, reach out to me on my city email, and I'd be happy to sit down and share a coffee and talk about my experiences with anyone watching. Aside from that, I do have a matters initiated. I would like to have on a future agenda, if we could discuss raising the pride flag for Pride Month in June. So I have head nods.
Okay. Thank you. And that's all.
Okay. Congressman Curling?
Thank you. So just a couple of things. One, I went to the Innovation Tri-Valley Game Changer Awards on the 29th, which is a great event. I think the mayor mentioned earlier, start Sparks, taking cobalts out of batteries. Again, some interesting technology and certainly a testament to the efforts of people in the in the valley here that are trying to promote high-tech development and jobs, really quite inspiring to hear what some of these folks are doing. It was sort of interesting that so the Lawrence Lab Fusion Team was recognized, and they pointed out, or the chair of the meeting pointed out that they were on 60 Minutes, they're on something else, and now they're getting the ITV Game Changer Award. So what could be better? That was very, very interesting evening. On the 30th, I had the pleasure of going to PAC 914, Cub Scout PAC 914, crossover from some of the older Cub Scouts, four of them, bridging on to Boy Scouts. And that's always a great event that I really enjoy participating in. And they have a dynamic group of kids, about 50 kids are in this pack, and they are just full of energy. And I have to admit, the skits are just hysterical as they put on. I did want to ask a question. I did see Mr. George spoke about Smash My Trash, and I saw the city manager and that our Innovation and Economic Development Director both speak to him. Are we going to follow up with him on? Okay, thank you. I was going to bring that up, but I I thought that was true, but I'm not sure that the public would have seen that as you were sneaking over there to talk to him. So thank you for doing that. That's it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Somebody's phone is talking to them. Oh, Siri, shush, we're busy. I have I have nothing to report other than the Game Changers Awards. It was it was definitely interesting. And I what I noticed going there is it was in Pleasanton, and it was the first time I had left Livermore in like months, which is how lucky I am to get to live and work from home, and not everybody gets to do that. So to get to live and work in the same place, it just it was a it was a stark reminder of how lucky I am every day and that everybody has has that. So more housing, more jobs, please. Can I make that a matters? No, that's it. And I'll pass it over to you.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. The I had my report that I put in, but on this weekend, I was at, actually, it was April 2nd, was the Livermore Amador, the Livermore Art Association Spring Show. There's all these acronyms. So the Art Spring Show, and I was able to present the the city art awards. The caliber of talent that we have in this community is really quite remarkable, performing arts and visual arts into musical arts, poetry, literature. It really is incredible. So it's it's great to be at the with all these these creative people. So that was a lot of fun. Today, I was also at the Alameda County Transportation Commission Planning Policy and Legislation Committee and talked about the safe routes to schools, safe streets, and Livermore, they provide bus passes to nine schools here in Livermore to allow them safe access to schools. And I also encourage everybody to get down to the the East Avenue, the tactical East Ave this Friday at 4 o'clock, East Avenue School. So this is all going to be based on public input. So we're putting these changes in there to find out what the public wants. So this is your opportunity to be heard. So please, participate. We want to hear what you have to say. So with that, there being no further business coming before the council, this meeting is adjourned.